With male anatomy.
Oh, yeah.
Lights on? Okay, whatever. I actually had to laugh.
Welcome to the 2019 Issaquah Candidate Forum presented tonight by the Quanis Club of Issaquah, the Issaquah branch of AAUW, and the Issaquah Cable TV Commission. I’m Debbie Burdo, and with me is Judy Rogers, your moderators for tonight. In the next hour and 15 minutes, we will hear from the six candidates for the Issaquah City Council. They include Lindsey Walsh, unopposed for position one; Michelle Kemper and Zach Hall for position two; Tim Flood and Barbara D. Michel for position three; and Victoria Hunt, unopposed for position six. The forum will begin with a two-minute opening from each candidate. In the interest of times, questions will then follow but only to the four opposed candidates. They will have one minute for responses and a 30-second optional rebuttal for the first responder. Our timer is seated in the front row and will raise a warning when 15 seconds remain and a stop signal when time is up. Questions have been gathered from the community. If an answer needs further clarification, we may ask a follow-up question. Audience, you have been supplied with note cards to submit questions, and we will try to consider as many of those as we can. Questions may not be directed to only one candidate. Please raise your hand and your note card will be collected. Audience, we also ask that you hold your applause until the end of the forum. The last question will come from the opposed candidates themselves. Each will ask their challenger a question. All the candidates will then have one minute for their closing remarks. So let’s get started. In order to keep the forum as friendly as possible, just like Issaquah, we’ll use only first names going forward. We will begin our two-minute opening statements from Lindsey, followed by Michelle and Zach, Tim and Barbara, and Victoria. So Lindsey?
Thank you. So my name is Lindsey Walsh. I am running again for position number four. I was appointed to the Issaquah City Council in February to replace Bill Ramos, who is here, who moved up to the state legislature. It’s been my privilege to serve during that time, and as is the standard practice, the next election cycle, you are up on the ballot. At this point, I am unopposed. I would very much appreciate your vote as a vote of confidence, but we are here mostly to hear from the opposed candidates. Just a little bit about me, I’ve lived in Issaquah Highlands for 10 years with my husband and two kids, ages 10 and 13. We chose Issaquah because of all of the beautiful hillsides, the fantastically safe neighborhoods, the diverse community, and it’s been a privilege to make this our home for the last 10 years. I’m a small business owner of 15 years, so I very much know what it’s like to balance a budget, to work with difficult financial times, which is what we’re experiencing with the city right now, and I think we need to make smart decisions that are all data-based for that. My priorities include investing in quality-of-life transportation projects, because I know that a lot of the things that we’re going to have to do for transportation obviously have to do with state funding, working with our neighboring cities, getting Highway 18 working for us. But I think there’s other things that we can do in the meantime to improve our ability to move around the city and work for the community that is here. Also, my other priorities are increasing the city’s partnership with the school district, championing fiscal responsibility in our decision-making, and smart growth. Again, my name is Lindsey Walsh. I look forward to hearing from the other candidates, and thank you, everyone, for being here tonight.
Michelle?
Okay, I’d like to introduce myself by talking about two topics. Let’s start first with money. I’m 35 years in my career as a chief compliance officer and vice president in a financial services company with $40 billion in assets. I managed a multimillion-dollar budget, and I oversaw our company’s state financial audits. So I bring a financial experience to the council. And so why is this skill needed? We’re in a structural deficit, and our city leaders are proposing various steps in order to close a $5.2 million gap. Some of those proposed steps include raising utility and water tax on top of a proposed 50% increase in water fees, cutting the environmental stewardship capital improvement plan projects down to zero, raising sales tax by two basis points, cutting the amount of grant funds from $105,000 down to just $35,000, which would, by the way, impact the Friends of the Salmon Hatchery, Issaquah History Museum, Leadership Eastside, and others. And they’re asking for a $50,000 study to take a look for the needs for a new city hall. Now, we need to cut expenses in areas that do not unduly affect our community, and we need to raise revenue for sustained growth. We need to do both, but it’s going to require some hard decisions that needs a candidate with in-depth budgeting background. Second point, we’re experiencing unprecedented growth, and with that comes more traffic. These problems are intertwined, and the solution needs both state, county, and local resources to solve them. King County has priorities with Light Rail, I-90, State Route 405, excuse me, I-405, and State Route 18. Our city needs a seat at that table, working with the county and the state agencies to advocate for our priorities on road issues. This also needs local government to keep growth on their valley floor and to preserve our hillsides. This means we need to streamline the permit process, we need municipal codes, we need transit centers, last-mile bus routes, incentives for employers to do dedicated commuter vans. We can do this. It’s one thing that we can’t do is to stand still. Your choice is a candidate with experience, someone with a vision for community services and a pragmatic eye on budget. Thank you.
Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name’s Zach Hall. I’m a candidate for position two on the Issaquah City Council. Issaquah is my hometown, and I loved every minute about growing up here. But like you, I’ve seen our best-of-the-northwest town triple in size, and I struggle with the daily crisis of traffic. We can do better. I got in this race because Issaquah needs forward-thinking, community-minded leadership. I worked for the state legislature as a legislative assistant, and my experience comes from helping coordinate policy development for projects and programs here in Issaquah, in the southeast Greater King County region, and also all across our state. And in this role, I’ve met with hundreds of you here in Issaquah. And that’s because another important part of my job is communicating with and advocating for our community, with residents like you, with other cities and school districts and tribes and our chambers of commerce in the region, with the county and with state agencies like those charged with our roads, with our environment, and with our children’s well-being. Over the last three years, I’ve also had the opportunity to knock on nearly 10,000 Issaquah doors, and I’ve heard hundreds of Issaquah stories along the way, stories of development, stories of our forested hillsides, stories of traffic and more stories of traffic. My background, working for the state legislature, organizing out in the Issaquah community, and growing up here in Issaquah, gives me a unique and well-informed understanding of the issues playing out here in Issaquah and across our region. And that’s why I’m proud to be endorsed by our local firefighters, our former Issaquah mayors Fred Butler and Ava Freisinger, city council members Mariah Batiste, Victoria Hunt and Lindsey Walsh, and our state representatives serving in Olympia. So I’m really looking forward to chatting more with you tonight about the issues, and thank you again for having me out.
Tim?
Good evening, and thanks to everyone for being here. My name is Tim Flood. I’m running for position number three. My wife Lauren and I live in the South Cove neighborhood. She’s a teacher in a neighboring school district, and we have two beautiful children. From my day job, I work for the world’s largest company, delivering executive briefings to corporate executives and government officials centered around how we leverage technology and data to help keep our environment safe. I’m running for city council because we need someone on council whose priorities are aligned with our citizens, and their platform is not determined by an outside political party or special interest group. My platform is focused on improving mobility, and I’ve served on the Issaquah Traffic Task Course, which gives me an in-depth knowledge of our issues and potential solutions to address them, to grow intelligently, where I have a number of substantive proposals, including regularly updating our impact fees and developing a developer code of conduct, and to govern with a fiscally responsible mindset, where my priorities and experience make me a better candidate for the time that we find ourselves with the upcoming budget shortfall. With that, I’ll pass it along. Thank you.
Barbara?
Hi. My name’s Barb D. Michel, and I’m running for position number three for the city council. I’m running because I want Issaquah to remain the warm and welcoming place it was when I arrived here 35 years ago. I came to Issaquah as the first public relations director for the Issaquah School District. I was a single parent. I was on a very tight budget. I was able to find affordable housing, affordable apartment right in downtown Issaquah, and I was able to walk to work. 10 years later, I served two years, two terms on the Issaquah School Board, and at about the same time, I went to the King County Department of Transportation and was 17 years there as a community relations planner, helping people all over Puget Sound bring better transit and better roads to their communities. After retiring from King County, I have been working to prevent youth substance abuse and to promote youth mental health, and currently I’m the business manager at the Garage, the New Teen Cafe in Issaquah. I asked myself, would the young Barbara D. Michel be able to find the same opportunities here that I found 35 years ago? And unfortunately, the answer to that is no, and it goes back to the beginning of my story. I was able to find affordable housing. Today, that’s nearly impossible in Issaquah. So my key issue is bringing affordable housing for our teachers, our social workers, our counselors, our nurses, our construction crews, all the people who work here but cannot find a place to live. That forces them into long commutes. That means that we have traffic jams because thousands of people come in and out of Issaquah every day for work. And my work at King County uniquely qualifies me to work on transportation solutions, especially transit and alternative forms of transportation. And finally, strong support for our social services and nonprofits in the area. I would appreciate your consideration for this position. Thank you.
Go ahead, Victoria.
Hello, my name is Victoria Hunt. I chose to move to Issaquah six years ago with my husband to raise our family here, and Issaquah is truly a great place to raise a family. We love hiking, we love our beautiful forested hillsides, visiting the salmon hatchery. There’s a vibrant downtown with things to do as a family. And I was also immediately struck after moving here by how fast the city is growing and changing. I see serving on city council as a way to work with the community, to have a positive impact on the lives of people in Issaquah, and to work with the community at this very critical time for our city. My top three priorities are, number one, preserving our beautiful natural environment; number two, preserving our small-town charm and welcoming community feel; and number three, making it more affordable to live here, so that more families can feel that Issaquah is a true home for them, as I do. On council, I’ve used my professional background in ecology and land use planning to improve our environmental stewardship practices in the city and to improve our smart-growth practices in the city. For example, I am very proud to have championed the acquisition of 46 acres of forested hillside known as the Bergsma property. This will provide huge public benefit as transit-accessible open space. And this action by council was also guided by a huge ground swelling of community support. So participating in this sort of community-guided action is really why I am seeking four more years serving on the Issaquah City Council. We can make a difference in the actions that we take on city council. A little bit about me, I have a PhD in ecology, and I also worked as affiliate faculty in the University of Washington in the urban design and planning department. And I’m a wife and a mom. I have two kids, they’re ages five and two years old, and my daughter is a kindergartner in the Issaquah school system. I’m also your council member, and transparency is very important to me, so please reach out so that we can work together, and I very much appreciate your civic engagement.
Thank you. We’ll now begin the question-and-answer portion of our forum. We will start with our first question with Michelle, then Zach. Michelle, you’ll then have an opportunity for rebuttal. Then we’ll move to Tim and Barb. And each question, we’ll be changing up the order of those, so we’ll have to all pay attention. So let’s begin with our first question, and many of our questions are topics that you’ve all touched on tonight, but let’s get to the big one for the city right now, and that’s that budget. Mayor’s proposed 2020 budget deals with a $5.2 million deficit in the general fund, partly by deferring hiring, cutting back on parks programming, and reducing the size of community grants. It would also add a new 6% sales tax to sewer and stormwater bills and increase the sales tax on sewer, on water to 6%. Do you agree with the mayor’s plan? What would you do different? What else would you do? Michelle?
That’s a big one. My background lends itself to this question, and this is probably my number-one reason for running for council. When it comes to righting the ship with our budget, it is not a matter of knee-jerk expense cutting. It has to be a combination of expense cutting and revenue generation. If you just cut expenses that are short-term, you need sustainable revenue sources in order to keep growth coming. So in terms of the sales tax increase, I’m not in support of that. I think that we need to be taking a look at other avenues for revenue increases. Sales tax is one of the most volatile ways of raising money for a city. Our sales tax is approximately 32% of our revenue. Property tax is 17%, utility tax is 10%, and BNO is 10%. One of the other issues was on utility tax. I think that is regressive, and I would not be in favor of raising our taxes on water and utilities. And I think the question that we would go back to the city, and this is actually not my question, city councils actually asked the city to do this, come back with an option that is not any of those, but come up with an option on how we can live within our existing budget. I’ve lost my time.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, yeah. For the mayor’s budget, there are things in it that I support, and there are things in it that are concerning to me at the moment. So we’ll start with where I support. I do support exploring reforms where we’re out of the ordinary in terms of other eastside cities, like our utility tax rates, things like water, sewer and stormwater, like you had described, and anything that we can do to reduce our reliance on sales tax revenues, which is certainly out of the ordinary. I also, given that, also support expanding our water rate discount programs here in Issaquah. You know, we actually have a little-known low-income senior water utility discount program that people can apply for, and I would like to see that expand to other low-income and fixed-income residents here in Issaquah. For my concerns with the budget, I worry about relying too heavily on fee increases like those proposed at the community center and for the pool. For example, increasing the senior gold pass from $25 to $120 might just mean people decide not to renew their subscription or their membership. And I also think cuts to our community grants funding could be detrimental to organizations that do good in our community. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle, do you have any rebuttal to any of that?
Not a rebuttal. I think, though, I would add that when we’re looking at water tax increases, yes, it’s important in terms of how that impacts low-income families, how it impacts all of our families. But one of the questions that’s not been asked yet for city is how does a water tax increase and a water fee of nearly 50% increase impact our local businesses?
Okay. Okay, same question for you, Tim?
Thank you. I’m largely supportive of the mayor’s proposal, and in an interview with the Chamber of Commerce a week or two before she proposed it, I gave kind of a blueprint of my opinions at that point, and she’s followed a lot of the same things that I would have done. So namely, it’s really a combination, basically, between raising revenues and cutting expenses. The $5.2 million, there’s really not, you can’t do it on just one side of the equation, you’ve got to do both. The utility taxes, although that’s a tough pill to swallow, on average, that’s going to be about $29 a month to the average Issaquah homeowner. Property tax increases about $11 a month, so our Issaquah residents are going to see about a $40 increase, and at the end of the day, we’ve got to ask for that from our residents, at the same time, tell them that we’re cutting services. Unfortunately, that’s the position that we find ourselves in, and the mayor had to make some tough decisions, and she made them in a pragmatic fashion, holding off on hiring some folks and cutting where she saw fit. I think it’s a result of the sales tax and utility taxes coming down, and also a new finance director that is doing things a little bit more accurately than in years past, and hopefully it’s temporary to some of those social services, and we can put funding back in the budget in future years.
Budget is always a statement of our values, and so I will look at the budget through the lens of how is it going to impact people in our community. I think that the mayor has done a, and the finance director have done a commendable job of trying to balance revenue increases with expensive, expense, cuts to expenses, excuse me. But there are some areas that really worry me, and they’ve been mentioned already, the senior gold pass, which is, they’re proposing will quadruple in cost, which is a small amount in a large budget, so it seems to me that we can negotiate that. I worry as well about the increases to the utilities tax for low-income people, and I would like to see that the city be very aggressive about pursuing mitigations for people in our community who will be harmed financially by that proposal.
Tim, any follow-up?
Not directly to what Barb said there, but one other aspect, I think, we didn’t see cuts across the board. The mayor was careful not to cut things that addressed public safety, right, and also to invest in increased funding in things that are aligned with our strategic plan. So I think there are areas where we could make modest increases. One area I think that that would make sense is to invest in our business community. So with a couple modest programs where we could plug in new businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, potentially bring on someone equivalent to our neighborhood engagement coordinator, put someone in that sort of position that would reach out for outreach to our business community, would be a short-term investment with a long-term positive return on investment.
All right, for this next, excuse me, for this next question, we’re going to start with Zach, but of course, all of you know that you’ll have to answer the question, too. So for this question, excuse me, “Everyone agrees that mobility is a problem, but no one seems to have a clear plan of what to do near term. What are your top three ideas for improving traffic congestion on city streets, and how specifically would you address funding for these?”
Yeah, that’s a great question, and I think it falls under the umbrella, you said near-term traffic improvements, it falls under the umbrella of like, what are these quality-of-life improvements that help our residents get around town more quickly, more easily, and more safely? And then we pair that with regional work. So in terms of that, I think limiting pass-through traffic is an important one in improving mobility around town. You know, we can reprogram our traffic lights to prioritize movements around town over movement through it. We can explore ways of making our roadways more urban-feeling with features like roundabouts and crosswalks. And also, we can explore ways to make our roadways more pedestrian, transit, and bike-friendly, all these things working to reduce speed limits or reduce the speed at which you’re moving through a road, and hopefully incentivize people to move onto larger, more commuter routes and free up our residents to move around town more quickly. As terms of how to fund it, I’m eager to engage with city staff on what funding alternatives would look like for those. My idea for these kinds of projects would be we would seek out low-cost, high-impact projects around town and invest in those.
All right, Michelle?
75% of our traffic in Issaquah is by car, and 15% is by bus, according to regional agencies. For three immediate activities owing to our budget issue, I would pick three that actually have very nominal impact on cost to our city. One would be to synchronize our lights using technology to move traffic. A yellow light should be used rather than a red to keep traffic that’s moving at an intersection with nobody coming. We should be working with Metro to expand the last-mile bus routes to get people from transit centers to their home and back again. And we should be partnering with what’s called the innovative triangle of employers. That’s the Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland key base. That’s the Microsoft, the Googles, the big employers there, so that these employers can actually be having employee buses and vans. I know that has been done before with my employer in Bellevue. It can be done to move them from Bellevue back and forth to Issaquah. The cost to our city would be nominal to nothing. It’s in a partnership. In terms of the big items for transportation, they’re expensive, and the way to fund those has got to be through leveraging our seat at the table with regional agencies.
Zach, do you have a rebuttal?
Yeah, I’ll just piggyback on that and add on to it. We need to partner with our neighboring cities also from a regional perspective, our neighboring chambers of commerce, and yes, even our school districts, and say, hey, these are the projects in the greater region that impact all of our cities, that impact all of our students and all of our residents, and go to the, go to the county and go to the city and advocate for fixes there. And in partnership with local improvements, I’m confident that those will bring about a leaving traffic in town.
All right. Barb, your opportunity to start first over there?
Thank you. I like to illustrate this problem very easily. We have this many roads, and we have this many cars. And so my focus, although I do agree that we need some road improvements, will be on reducing the number of trips that people take in their single-passenger cars. And so my top issues would be, number one, increasing transit in the area, creating, improving transit usage, because we’ve got capacity in our transit right now. I would, number two, be working with employers. We have the Office of Sustainability here in Issaquah that works with employers to increase car-pulling, van-pulling, ride-sharing, and all of those alternatives, including telecommuting. My son telecommutes one day a week as REI’s commitment to not have cars on the road. And then we need to increase our walking paths, our bike paths, and then we have a whole range of creative transportation, alternative forms of transportation, because none of those work for everybody. We have to have a big menu of alternatives that people can choose to get around and increase our mobility.
All right, Tim?
As far as specific projects, I think we should really take a mindset of targeting where there has been recent development. One example of that would be along Newport Way, where we can add some turn lanes that really would help people that live there, but not necessarily facilitate that pass-through traffic. I’ve been an advocate for years of a pathway along Northwest Sammamish Road, which would regain the trust of a community there, connect our community to the rest of the city, and really live up to our intermodal aspirations. And lastly, to institute some rush-hour shuttles to some of our more dense neighborhoods, to existing transit centers, to solve that last-mile problem and engage people that are willing to take transit. I think even as we work to, and we do need to increase the percentage of folks that leverage mass transit, we can’t bury our heads in the sand and act like we can remove cars from the road. The truth is, forecasted growth is going to mean there are more cars on the road, and we cannot simply ignore our roadways. I’ve got two car seats in my car and a variable schedule, right? So transit’s great for the folks that live in downtown on the valley floor, but those roads need to work for the rest of us.
So my rebuttal to that is that none of the projects that Tim mentioned would actually add to capacity, and capacity is what we’re talking about. We are just trying to push more and more cars down the same roads. And so, yes, we need to look at improvements. That means left-turn lanes and helping roundabouts and those things that help the flow of traffic. But really, if we’re going to deal with changes in our lifetime, we’ve got to start looking at how we start moving people, attracting people to move to other forms of transportation. And so that has got to be our focus in the long run. It’s also environmentally much more friendly.
Please stop.
Thank you.
Okay, the next question, we will start with Tim. A few years ago, the city added a Department of Economic Development. In what ways has it been successful? And given the changing retail climate, what should be its future goals?
Well, first of all, I would say that my, I have an MBA and a successful career in technology and finance, and so this is something where I think I would certainly be a conduit for our business community and our economic development department. I think you’ve seen over, we’re fortunate in Issaquah to have a nice, diverse tax base, right? So sales tax actually our number-one source of revenue for the city, BNO tax, when you combine those two, it’s about 45%. And that’s the envy of some of our neighbors, especially when times are good. An over-alliance is where we find ourselves now when times are not so good. And so I think we find ourselves where some businesses are either going out of business or growing and leaving Issaquah, and that’s really the last thing I would ever want to hear, right? You’re so successful that your business grows that now you leave. I’ve had a I've had a chance to talk with a number of business owners here, recently spoke with a business owner that was opening another branch in North Bend. And he mentioned to me that they basically are laser-focused on giving him exactly what he's looking for, right? And wanting him to start his business and grow his business there. And I think when you're a larger city, sometimes you can lose sight of the small-business owner out there, much like a larger company kind of loses sight of the customer. And I mentioned before my proposal to have somebody focused on that in terms of community outreach, to attract new businesses, help existing ones, potentially lure new, large employers to town.
Barb?
I think the Economic Development Office has done a good job of selling Issaquah as a place to do business. And I've worked directly with them on some issues, and they've been very helpful. I think we're facing a problem here that goes back to my key priority, and that is affordable housing. We can recruit employees, but they leave shortly after they find out what kind of a commute they have and how many hours they're on the road. So our employers are facing a recruitment and retention issue where we have a revolving door all the time. And especially with our highly-trained nurses at Swedish, the firefighters talked to me about how firefighters, it's about three years, and then they leave to go someplace else, taking all of that training out the door as they go. So this is not necessarily a part of the economic development, it's part of the bigger picture, that we have to be looking at affordable housing and how people can both live and work in Issaquah. It's part of the bigger picture.
Tim?
I think the other side of the equation, we talk about housing affordability, is a number of good-paying jobs in town. And I think that's one of the roles of the Economic Development Commission. I've had a chance to speak with our former mayor about, in the past, where we had an opportunity to lure another big employer to town and a couple other government officials. And it seems like in those situations, we've kind of been passive, and those opportunities have come to us and we haven't seized them. And I think we can take a more proactive approach to attract and retain some good-paying jobs in town and try and solve that affordability issue from that side of the equation as well, where people can have a good-paying job and afford to live here.
Okay, as we switch over and begin with Michelle, I'm going to remind you of the question.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And that is about the Department of Economic Development. How has it been successful? And going forward, what should some of its goals be?
I think that the goals are probably in five areas. As a member on the Chamber of Commerce and with an executive MBA in my background on business development, I would see five things that our economic vitality department should be working on. One is a strategy for economic vitality, partnering with both city employees, council, and chamber, that we need to measure specific strategy points for our business development. Second, we need to hire locally. We need job fairs. We have them, we need more of them. And yes, affordable housing and transportation affects this, but we need to do both at the same time. We need to be training employees. I think here's where the chamber could be stepping up to the plate, working with local universities to provide advanced training levels for our small employers here, for their employees. I think that the fourth point should be that we should encourage businesses to come to our city in the first place. We can create incentives, a break in B&amp;O tax, for example, membership in the chamber, for training and job fairs, and most importantly, expedited permit processing. And last, we need to recruit the big guy. Thank heavens for Costco and the other big employers here, they keep our nose above the water, but we need room for another one.
Okay, Zach?
Thank you. Yeah, I think the Economic Development Office has done, in coordination with the city, has done an excellent job with regard to capitalizing on opportunities in recreational tourism here in Issaquah and the businesses that benefit from our recreational assets here and locally in the Issaquah area. But I think we can also take better advantage of our unique setting in this space, too. And for starters, I'm very supportive of the community committee applying for a creative district designation for the Old Town area. And these certifications actually help create jobs and opportunities for our residents, bring in more tourism, attract artists and startups, and grow a more holistic, sustainable, and diverse local economy. And I think that's a really important point that the Economic Development Commission should be considering, too, as we go through that. I also think it is important to be better mindful about how we can set policies to attract startup companies, wanting to settle in open-workspace settings near the natural environment. And Issaquah is certainly a perfect setting for that.
Okay, Michelle, any follow-up?
I would just add one more point. While we've been focused on tourism, I think we've missed a big opportunity. And I'll just use a quick story to illustrate. It was several months ago that we had the professional volleyball tournament here at Lake Samamish. It was a wonderful experience with people, athletes, international athletes and visitors coming from all over to Issaquah. But we didn't partner with the chamber or with the Downtown Issaquah Association or with the city to move those folks from the south end of Lake Washington, or Lakes Samamish, when those games were over. I ran into them in downtown Bellevue. They were eating and drinking in Bellevue. We needed to have partnered with our chamber so that we were actually using our resources here.
For this next question, we've touched on this topic several times by various people. And so affordable housing, coupled with available social services, is an Issaquah and a regional problem. What one specific near-term action would you take to address these concerns? So we're going to start this time with Barb.
So affordable housing has many different layers. So we have to be clear about what we're talking about. Workforce housing is for folks that are 60% to 80%. Affordable housing, 30% to 60%. And then subsidized housing. So, and then we have the homeless issue as well. So each one of those requires us to approach it differently. I think the first thing I would do is to work with our faith-based community. They are very interested in this topic, and they have the access to some of the resources and partnerships that could bring more affordable and workforce housing to the Issaquah area. And that conversation has been going on with some of the people, even in the audience tonight, about how can we partner between the business community, the faith-based community, city government, to bring more affordable and workforce housing to Issaquah?
Excuse me, Tim?
So when we had a building moratorium, we updated our building codes in the city here to include building on the valley floor here, to include affordable units. And so so far, we've only seen one development that has lived up to that, but that's 10% on the valley floor, and I think that's a positive step forward. In the 2020 budget from the mayor, we see an increase in funding to ARCH, which is the Regional Housing, Affordable Housing Consortium. And so there's a new legislation where the city gets to get a little bit of a kickback of its sales tax from the state. And the city has decided we're going to allocate all of that kind of windfall to affordable housing. So I'm supportive of those steps and incremental steps of the like. But the truth is, in the short term, expanding that, expanding that part of the mandate is simply something that we can't afford in the next year or two with the budget shortfall that we have. In the future, when times are a little bit better, one option that we could evaluate is a multifamily tax exemption, which is something where we're going to incentivize affordable units through the tax code, which is something that basically you're not directly subsidizing it, but you're kind of foregoing some future tax revenue, I think is one tool that we should evaluate when we can afford to do so.
The 10% requirement is a very good start, but it's not going to meet anywhere near the need that we have for affordable housing. And so we're going to need to look out of the box, so to speak. And none of the proposals that I'm putting forward would actually be subsidized by the city government. The city becomes a partner in giving incentives, in providing help, in writing letters of support. That's how the city becomes a partner. I'm currently on the board of the Together Center in Redmond, and I could talk about that more, but my time is up.
All right, Zach?
Would you mind rereading the question?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have repeated it. Affordable housing, coupled with available social services, is an Issaquah and regional concern. What one specific near-term action would you take to address these concerns?
Yeah, thank you. I think I'm going to come at this from a different perspective. You said coupled with social services that we have here in Issaquah, too. And when we're talking about affordable housing, affordable living here in Issaquah, we really need to come up with creative solutions to come at this puzzle of every aspect of affordability in someone's life. And so I want to touch on something I said earlier today, too, and that is expanding a water rate discount program for those living on low and fixed incomes. These are creative ideas that we can be working on right away to help those struggling to pay rents, to help those struggling to make payments on their homes, to have just a little bit more equity with them to be able to make those payments. And I hear this time and time again in my daughter conversations with people, it would be great if the council could just make it just a little bit easier for me, just a little bit easier for me. And so that would be one thing I want to do right away as a member of the Issaquah City Council, and then also looking at other creative ways to expand affordable living outside of just decreasing the cost of housing here in Issaquah.
Michelle?
I'm going to answer this very nitpicket, get down to just the one thing that I would do. And that would be that I would work with our city to pass a townhome simple fee code. And that's just a legal term that describes the type of ownership, a condo you own, what's inside the wall, a townhome, it's outside the wall and the land. A townhome simple fee means that a builder can go in and get easier loans, easier for refi, easier to sell, and can do faster turnaround for development of townhomes. So when we're talking about affordable living, affordable homes, it is not that single-family house on a large lot in the middle of town. That is not affordable housing. Affordable housing is density. We can solve this problem if we can get builders who will come in and actually have an easier way with the banks to build a townhome in a very fast fashion.
All right.
And I'll just add that it's important that we ensure that these builders, that these developers are requiring mixed-income elements as along to the high-density elements to their developments, which creates opportunities for residents of all incomes, like our fixed-income residents, our low-income residents, and of all working backgrounds, like our first responders and our teachers and our healthcare professionals, to live in Issaquah and to continue to live in Issaquah if they choose.
All right. Okay, for our next question, we're going to start with Michelle. Issaquah's soul is defined by its connections to nature, things like our forested hillsides and trails, salmon in the creek, our parks, and abundant wildlife. Where does all this fit in your priorities? And will you commit to protecting and expanding our open spaces and trails?
Charm of Issaquah is just looking out the door at what, when we first moved here, I looked at the hills, and my new neighbor said that's known as the Issaquah Alps. And I thought, how charming. My son, when he was eight years old, asked for a puppy. Instead, we gave him a fishing pole. And that became a lifelong love affair with our rivers and streams right here in the Issaquah Valley. That is so important, not just to me, but to our family. If we don't preserve what we have, and it's covered over with asphalt, it is gone. It is our responsibility to the next generation to preserve what we have. We are in the largest estuary in the United States, right here. Our salmon stream is so vital, and the work that we're doing to promoting the salmon return is so vital to the ecology and the life cycle of not just the salmon, but for every living thing between here and Alaska and all the way to Hawaii. I would be working on council to make sure that there is budget activity for environmental stewardship. And I know that our city is re-looking at those priorities. They have taken them all off of our capital improvement plan down to zero, and I know that they're looking to find a way to put them back on the list.
Our easy access to Lake Samamish and the Issaquah Alps that Michelle mentioned really makes Issaquah a unique destination to live, work, and play. You've probably heard that a lot. So yes, I commit here and now to working to protect and expand our open spaces here in Issaquah. We need to ensure that our community parks are safe and well-maintained for us all to enjoy and preserve and protect our forested hillsides, but also the habitat for our salmon and also ensuring that we're protecting our environment so it helps our watershed and helps our salmon. And I'll just end by saying a story, too. I think it's important to take advantage of institutional knowledge in this space. I was recently having a conversation with a member who serves on the River and Streams Board for the city of Issaquah. And they were telling me all about their knowledge about noxious weeds and different things in environmental history here in Issaquah. And I asked them if they'd ever been approached by a city council member just to talk and take advantage of this institutional knowledge that they had. And they said they'd never been approached before. So I think this is an opportunity where we're dropping the ball, and it would be really helpful to sit down with all these people regularly for the city council and engage and tap into that knowledge. Thank you.
Any follow-up, Michelle?
I think Zach is correct. We need to be working with agencies that are focused on our environmental protection. A little factoid from our friends at the salmon hatchery, they release over 5 million fry. And when they get out to Lake Washington, that count is down to 300,000. They release 5 million, and when it gets to Lake Washington, it's down to 300,000. And that's because of the urbanization that's been occurring in this area. So working with local agencies to find out how we can actually increase the success of those salmon runs is very important to me.
Okay, Tim?
So my first exposure to Issaquah was actually, I had lived in Bellevue at the time, was coming and hiking Cougar Mountain as part of what attracted us to come and live here in the first place. So this is definitely near and dear to my heart. One pillar of my platform is intelligent growth, and one element of that is to protect our green space. And so I think what the city can do is, when possible, acquire land particularly along our streams and to update our development codes particularly along those streams to make sure that it is a habitat that supports our salmon runs. So salmon are actually a part of our identity. You know, we recently just had Salmon Days, and we have 150,000 folks in town, which is an economic boon and, again, part of our identity. Salmon fishing is also a $3 billion industry in the state of Washington. So it's something that we're, one area where the environmental concerns and industry do come together in terms of protecting that habitat. And so I would absolutely support those efforts.
In 1990, the state of Washington passed the Growth Management Act. And I've been outdoor-belling now for several months, and I can tell you that the pressure is starting to grow from people not understanding what the Growth Management Act is, what it is requiring us to do in terms of density in urban areas so that we protect our forests and our farmlands on the other side of the urban growth boundary. And so my concern is that we need to explain to people, we need to bring them up to speed, we need to realize, a lot of people who've moved here don't even know what the Growth Management Act is. And if we are going to continue down this path of preserving our forests and farmlands, we need to make sure that our communication is really clear. Yes, I would commit to making sure that we have and protect our open spaces, but I would really like to see a major communications effort to bring people up to speed with what is the Growth Management Act and why is it important to our environment.
Just one more point, and the city went to great extent to formulate the Central Issaquah Plan. And one of those tenets is that we're going to build and focus our growth in Central Issaquah on the valley floor, close to transit, and protect those forested hillsides. So that's a key element that had a ton of citizen input, and I think we need to actually put that into action and live up to that in terms of protecting the forested hillsides moving forward.
All right, the next question. The city struggles to engage the public in decision-making, except for a handful of dedicated citizens. Public engagement is a city goal, especially at a time when there is less media oversight than ever. What would you do to make progress in this area? So this time, we're going to start with Zach.
Great. Thank you very much. You know, I like to say out on the campaign trail that a city council that actively and thoughtfully reaches out into the community isn't just learning, which they are, they're learning, but they're also helping build strong a sense of trust between people and government. And I think that right now is the most important time to earn your trust again. And community engagement and involving as many people as we can in the decision-making and bringing as many people as we can to the table for their future in the city is an important aspect of that. And I absolutely commit to a high level of community engagement as a city council member. You know, we need to meet and hear with you or and hear from you in your own communities instead of just expecting you to come here to city council chambers and testify on camera. And sometimes that can be really nerve-wracking. We, you know, I commit to scheduling regular community coffees around town like the mayor does. I think that's an excellent idea. I commit to offering to attend HOA meetings around town and hear direct- I commit to offering to attend HOA meetings around town and hear direct concerns from HOA members and also the people who are able to go to those neighborhood meetings. And I'm also wanting to advocate for rotating city council meetings around town to create more opportunities for you all to participate in the process closer to you.
Michelle?
I echo a lot of what Zach has said. It's very important for us to, as council members, to reach out to the community as opposed to the other way around. I don't know about you, but I received so many surveys, which have got canned series of questions, and it doesn't really get to the heart of what I want to say, and they never end the survey by saying, and what else do you want me to know? It's just a series of canned questions. So that would be one thing I would recommend we not do, and we should stop spending money on that. The thing for communication is meeting people on their own turf, understanding and having communications with people that have common interests, whether that is coffees with the mayor, school events. I just attended one here in the Issaquah Highlands at a community meeting where local residents would just come to a meeting to talk about cultural issues. And we ended up talking about how that really impacts newcomers coming into our city and how language differences and cultural differences can become barriers to people actually understanding what the services are in our city. So I echo a lot of what Zach says. We need to work with our community by going to the community, not having them have to come into our city council meetings. And as a council member, I would be active in the community.
Zach, you have anything more?
Yeah, well, I'll also just add that by design, while we're campaigning for office up here, we're out knocking on doors and talking to people, and community engagement is built into the design of campaigning for public office. And I just want to recognize that and call attention to that. And I've so enjoyed my time knocking on your doors here in Issaquah. I've visited nearly every neighborhood so far, and we got a little less than a month, so I'm going to try and hit them all. So thank you very much.
All right, before I ask for responses from Tim and Barb, do either one of you need to have the question?
That would be nice.
Okay, no problem on my part. The city struggles to engage the public in decision-making, except for a handful of dedicated citizens. Public engagement is a city goal, especially at a time where there is less media oversight than ever. What would you do to make progress in this area?
Are you first?
I'm first on this one.
No, actually, it's Barb's first.
I'm sorry. So my job at King County for 17 years was as a community relations planner, and so I have many ideas about how we can improve community engagement. What I hear from people as I'm outdoor belling is they say they don't know how their input is being used. They don't get the closure loop. How did what I told the city council or I told the staff, being used for a decision? And when they don't hear back, and that happens several times, then they quit giving input. So we have to demonstrate to the public how their input is making an impact on our decisions. I think that's the most important thing. I would like the city council to adopt some protocols for communications. I would like to, again, just as I've said with transportation, to have a big menu of options. Some people cannot come to meetings, and some people don't want us to come to them. They do want to do it on the internet. So we need to have a whole range of communications options. But I think the biggest thing is, how did you use my input? And they want to know that they made a difference.
Right. Tim?
Well, I currently serve as my HOA president and have prided myself on the fact that I listen to our other members and anyone who comes and visits and what their priorities are before I opine, and in so doing, try and get people's opinions and input there. So the city has enlisted the help in a new position here for the Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator. And I mentioned before, I think we need a comparable position for our business community. And so when we talk about engagement, I think we're not getting that level of engagement from our business community, which would help us budgetarily and community-wise. And you say people aren't engaged. I think people are engaged in what they care about, right? So if you're a member of Kiwanis or one of the environmental groups or the Chamber of Commerce, you are going to those meetings, right? So we need to go to where people are and listen, right? So we don't need necessarily to give up and give a stump speech at every meeting that we attend, but go where people are, listen, whether it's an HOA meeting or a community organization meeting. And last thing I would say is, there's a bit of a trust deficit where people have kind of tuned out the government. And a couple of examples would be the stoplight at Providence Point, the pathway along Northwest Samamish Road, where if we prioritize those projects, we can regain some of that trust and help to drive some engagement moving forward.
Barb? Okay, all right, thank you.
Great, we'll go to the next one, beginning with Tim. What can and will you do as an elected official to de-stigmatize, educate, and advocate for mental health services? Your answer might include support for additional resources for diversion services that offer options other than sending people to jail.
Well, this one's near and dear to my heart. I have some family members with things that you might consider mental health issues, and I've seen firsthand what it does when people are excluded. And I think the number one thing that we can do is, as much as possible, just mainstream inclusion for folks, particularly, you know, in my mindset, I think about kids and students in terms of classrooms and activities, and, you know, give people a chance to experience life the same as anyone else that's out there. So in terms of the city, what we can do, I don't know about specific programming, if I'm being honest, but I think we can use our position to basically advocate for those types of mindsets, and when appropriate, potentially step in and use our ability to communicate with the wider area to advocate for those types of programs.
So I spent the last nine years working on youth substance abuse prevention and youth mental health promotion, and both of those are big areas where stigma plays an amazing role in preventing people from actually accessing the services that they need. We need to be open and honest about our own mental health issues or the mental health issues of our relatives and friends, so I commend you, Tim, for saying that. And we also need to be fierce advocates. I want to commend Lisa Callen and Bill Ramos, who are in the audience, because the legislature this past year did a great deal to improve our very broken mental health system. It's a big regional problem, but it begins really with individual stories. We all just have to be brave and say, this is what's happening to us, and there are things that are there to help people, but we need more. The services we have right now are at full capacity and with a lot of people in need that need more services. Advocacy and telling our stories.
No rebuttal, but this is one where I actually do actually admire and appreciate
what my opponent has done for substance abuse and particularly for influence of choice and what we've seen recently in Samamish. I think it's more important than ever that the good work that she's done there.
Thank you very much. Michelle?
I don't want to be echoing everything that's been said, except just nod my head and say yes. I think it's very important for our city to partner with local agencies who are best suited for having inclusive-type programs that people can access, whether it's through schools, churches, community groups. In order to support the mental health of our community, I do not believe that that is a department that should be buried within the city itself. I think it is best, boots on the ground, as the cliche goes, with agencies that the city can partner with. Barb is very vocal in her support of some of those organizations. These are not city departments. These are independent organizations that the city helps to build, fund, and support, and I would be a key advocate for that.
Yeah, I'll just start by saying, actually, I think it's kind of nice that we're all saying the same thing. And I'm sure many of the city council members sitting on city council today would argue the same thing. And that is that, you know, our duty as a city government is to promote inclusion and support of all of our residents, no matter what age, no matter what background. And I think it's important for the city to continue building better partnerships with our local nonprofit organizations like the Food Bank, Influence the Choice, Friends of Youth, and the Teen Garage, to engage with and reach our residents and our youth in many ways. And more than that, I think we also need to discover how best we can support their work. And that starts by sitting down at the same table and being honest and open about the needs of our community and where we all fit in that puzzle. And if there's a gap, where the city can join in to fill that gap, because at the end of the day, it's our responsibility to ensure the well-being of our residents here in Issaquah.
Annie?
No follow-up.
All right. Excuse me. The council continues to consider the need for building a new city hall. One idea is to build it at Veterans Memorial Field. Do you support a new city hall? If so, where? This time, I'll start with Barb.
At this point in Issaquah's history, I do not support building a city hall. We are facing a large deficit, and that needs to be resolved. We are facing the fact that the city has not passed or completed audits for the last four years. That needs to be resolved. We have a lot of needs. We need to look at how we're going to pay for our transportation projects that are on the TIP but not funded. And so we're looking at a great many things that need to be funded. I would, there is a time, I think there will be a time, when we will need to look at a new city hall. And at that point, I would like to address it, but in the current environment, I do not support building a city hall.
All right, Tim?
So there was a presentation here where we went over kind of the underlying need for a city hall. And the fact is, there are three different buildings that constitute the city hall. There's some safety issues, there's some kind of ease-of-doing-business issues. And so eventually, it is going to make sense for a city, especially as we continue to grow, and we want to be a world-class city, to have a city hall. But a cost of, say, $36 to $40 million, if you were to finance that on a 20-year bond, there's $2 million of debt service per year, and we're facing a $5.2 million shortfall. So if there are inexpensive ways to start to evaluate that, then I think that would make sense. It's an inevitability down the line at some point. Short-term, we can't afford it. As far as where it would go, I think it makes sense to select a location that can accommodate all of our existing facilities and additional have room to grow. So that's the issue that we have now, is we've kind of run out of capacity. So in terms of specifics, I couldn't tell you, but that would be the mindset I would take to citing the new city hall.
Barb, any? No rebuttal. All right, thank you. Zach?
Yeah, I'll just start by saying, no, I'm not in favor of building a consolidated city hall on Memorial Field. I personally think that that's a treasure to our city, and I love that field. But I also want to be clear that our staff is telling us that they don't have the chairs, the desks, the space, the resources that they need to deliver the top-quality level of service to our residents. And so I think that that needs to be taken very seriously. So as we consider how we're going to balance the budget in the future, I would also like to see more information from city staff about what a public-private partnership might look like for a city hall and whether or not we can just rent more office space to be able to get the job done, and if that would be a practical alternative to building a brand-new city hall building.
I think I'm going to make this a consensus down the table. I am not in favor of building a new city hall at this point. Earlier estimates, we're in the $32-plus million range for our city hall building. Excuse me. And right now, currently, in our revised budget, is $50,000 for a consultant to consider the design aspects. So I also do not approve, would not approve that to be in our expenses in 2020. What I think is important is the $250,000 that has been earmarked for discussion for hiring a consultant to see where we can improve our city services and maybe focus on some very specific categories of services as opposed to across the board. Building a brand-new brick-and-mortar building at this point in our city's budget cycle, I'm not in favor of. I also agree that a trend is to rent office space, and we happen to have one of the major building developers right here in Issaquah. I won't name names, since I'm not doing a commercial, but I think you all know who it is, but we do have capacity to build commercial real estate space that our city could rent. Thank you.
Zach, anything else? No, you're good. Thank you.
I think we're going to try to squeeze one more in here, and we will be starting with Michelle. City is talking about possibly adding fluoride to the water. Where do you stand on that?
Okay, let's go with the facts. The CDC has said that fluoride is capable of reducing dental caries. That's a fact. The CDC also says that the application for fluoride needs to be applied to the surface of the tooth. It is not to be ingested. So when you put it in water and you drink it, it doesn't get into your bloodstream and then go to your teeth. It doesn't get into your intestinal tract and then go to your teeth. It is superficial when you drink the water. If you've got dental plaque on your teeth, that, when the fluoride's in the water, it sticks to the dental plaque on your teeth. When you go to the dentist for a fluoride treatment, they don't give you a glass of water to drink. They apply fluoride directly to your teeth. Now, studies going back to the 1950s show that fluoride in the water did reduce dental issues in children. But that was also a population that did not have toothpaste with fluoride in it. Today's toothpaste supplies 100% of the fluoride you need to prevent cavities. So the question is, not whether or not fluoride is safe in the water, but do you need double the dose? If the majority of our population uses toothpaste, that's 100% of your fluoride. So my question is, do we want to spend money to add fluoride to the water if you've already getting it through your toothpaste?
Zach?
Thank you, yeah. I will, let's just be really clear here. Issaquah should follow best practices when it comes to public health policy, and that continues to be to fluoridate drinking water. Decades of scientific research, including research that was published just a year ago, concludes the safety and effectiveness drinking it. And public health professionals at the University of Washington, the American Dental Association, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention continue to endorse its health benefits. So again, just to be clear, it's safe, it's cost-effective, and there are numerous benefits to all ages to preventing and lessening tooth decay. And then I also just want to bring up one thing that's not mentioned in this conversation, too, but there's actually data to show that residents and families living in communities that fluoridate their drinking water actually save money on out-of-pocket dental care costs. So as we're talking about this big picture of affordability, this is a part of the discussion. How do we ensure that we're doing everything we can to save money in our residents' pockets when we can? I see this as an opportunity to do that, still moving forward with safe public policy.
In the interest of time, we're going to skip the rebuttal and go straight to Tim.
So right now, in Issaquah, a third of our residents don't have fluoride in their water, and two-thirds do. And with the growth that we're facing, we're going to be building a new water facility, and that's why we're at this fork in the road of what do we do in terms of fluoridating the water. So with that new facility, we have three options, right? We can mix the water, not add fluoride. What that'll give us is an unknown amount of fluoride in the water and less than what the AHA, American Health Association, recommends. We can add fluoride so that everyone gets the same amount, and we know how much they're getting. Or we can actively remove it, which is actually the most expensive option, which will add $20 a month to your water bill. So based on the scientific evidence and the financial impact, my stance is to add fluoride to the water so that everyone has the same amount. It's the medically recommended amount, and we move forward.
Okay, Tim just said exactly what I was going to say. So I was all prepared. So let me add that you can pick facts, but the CDC has said that fluoridation is one of the 10 most effective public health programs that has happened in the United States in the last century. 60% of, there has been a 60% reduction in dental care needs in the United States since the introduction of fluoridation. So the question here, though, is not about the health. Two-thirds of the people in Issaquah are already using fluoride, and it would be enormously expensive to the monthly bills of people to actively remove it. So everybody seems to be fine. I would think that we would want to go with the science on this one.
Can I give a rebuttal?
No. Ken, in your closing remark.
Okay.
At this time, I think we're going to move to sometimes the most interesting part of the forums, where we allow the candidates to ask a question of their opponent. So Michelle, we're going to we're going to let you start with a question for Zach.
Oh, okay. This is one that we've already talked about, so this is going to be a softball lob up for you. So the city needs to take immediate action to stave off the $5.2 million deficit, and one of the steps under consideration is to go to the voters to ask for a 2-basis-point increase in sales tax. This would put our sales tax rate higher than Seattle, and it would be higher than our neighboring Eastside cities. And the current budget discussion includes expense funds to bring this to the voters on the ballot for 2020. So my question is, how would you support the city's need for additional revenue by way of a sales tax increase, and what hurdles do you see for its success on the 2020 ballot?
Yeah, thank you. Right now, I'm not supportive of sales tax measure on the ballot. I'm very supportive of the mayor's efforts to increase revenue alternatives in our budget through utility tax rates. You know, and there are always obstacles to putting something on the ballot, too, coinciding with other things that happen to be on the ballot. I think that if we're going to put a sales tax proposal on the ballot, there needs to be a whole lot more community discussion and community engagement about what exactly will be funded by that, because as we've said, it's not really a stable source of income, and if things fluctuate, we need to be, our community needs to have a very good understanding of what is funded by that and what could be put at risk if we don't have that income coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, Zach, what do you got for Michelle?
Yeah. So during a recent interview with the Chamber of Commerce, you said you weren't in favor of raising new revenues, but actually, it sounds like maybe you changed your mind. So my question might not work anymore, but I was going to say, what benefits and services to our residents would you like to see drop in its place, in place of not raising revenues? But maybe you could just speak to why you changed your mind?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Try me one more time, please.
Okay. During an interview with the Chamber of Commerce, you had said that you're not in favor of raising new revenues to balance the budget, but now it sounds like you'd like to see a balance of both, which is what a lot of us have said. Maybe you could speak to that?
Okay, so my communication with the Chamber of Commerce was not raising revenue through sales tax. I'm not in favor of raising our sales tax. I think that would put us at a disadvantage. So I think we have the same question for each other. And I mentioned earlier in my comments that when we take knee-jerk cuts in expenses, it will have an immediate impact on our budget, but they're very short-lived. So the economic cycle shows that when you start cutting expenses, it actually cuts into your opportunities for revenue generation. So if you don't also, at the same time as you're cutting expenses, find ways to create new revenue, you're going to have an implosion on growth opportunities for our city. So it needs to be both. I think we're both saying the same thing.
Okay, and Tim, what do you got for Barb?
Barb, you've repeatedly said that affordable housing is your top priority, and tonight you mentioned that 10% of new units on the valley floor is not enough, but that writing letters to faith-based organizations would be. New units, in all reality, will cost tens of millions of dollars to develop new units in dense housing. And just in case people don't know, affordable units do not pay impact fees. So as we have that type of growth, it's actually going to exacerbate our traffic issues. So my question to you is, what specific proposals outside of those faith-based partnerships would you propose? How much would they cost, and how would we pay for them, especially in light of our current budget shortfall?
Right. So good, I get to complete a question that I didn't get to complete earlier. I'm on the board of the Together Center in Redmond. We are currently redeveloping that property, and we are proposing to build four stories of affordable housing on top of a mixed-use development. We are bringing in two private developers to work with us. The private developers are experts at getting federal tax incentives, and that is how they help to pencil out the development. They will manage the development once it's built. The Together Center will manage the bottom floor, which, again, is going to be a mixed-use development. And so this is what you call a public-private partnership. The city of Redmond has absolutely supported us through this without putting any money on the table, but helping us find resources, working us through the permit process, and writing letters of support for those private developers that they can take to the federal government. So it does work, and end of answer.
Okay, Barb?
All right. So, Tim, on your Facebook page, you have stated that you want to change city code to eliminate the provision that any single-family plot could be developed with a duplex because, quote, "they are not in line with our citizens' vision of the city," unquote. I've been out doorbelling and knocked on the doors of many duplexes that are graceful, well-crafted structures that fit beautifully into their neighborhoods. What do you have against duplexes, Tim? And how does your position fit with the Affordable Housing Work Plan that the city council adopted in 2017, which specifically encourages ADUs and multifamily dwellings?
So I don't have anything specifically against duplexes. So for a little bit of context, there's an agenda bill that's soon headed for the city council to address this specific issue. And there's a wrinkle in our building code where any single-family plot in town can be redeveloped as a duplex. And that provision was put in place before Talis, before the Highlands, before the Central Issaquah Plan, when Issaquah had no other means of growing. And now that we have a Central Issaquah Plan that has tremendous citizen input, when I say it's not in line with our citizen priorities, I'm referring to the Central Issaquah Plan, right? That's where we decided, is our mission and our way of moving forward, is we're going to focus that growth in those areas. The problem I have with, and so I would slightly amend it, because I got some feedback, but I think we should leave that provision in place within the Central Issaquah area, right? So single-family dwellings within the Central Issaquah area should be allowed to redevelop with higher density. In existing neighborhoods, the issue that you have is, we have a lot of cul-de-sacs, right? There's no parking. There's not enough room for the students and the utilities and the services that these people need in those neighborhoods, not to mention, that's not what the people that I'm talking to in those neighborhoods envision for those neighborhoods. And so I would say I would be okay with that in the Central Issaquah area, but protect our neighborhoods, just like the Central Issaquah Plan envisioned.
Okay, thank you, candidates. Okay, each candidate now has one minute for their closing remarks, and this will include all six of our candidates. So we began tonight with Lindsay, so let's go backwards, starting with Victoria.
Great, thank you. So the candidates answered questions tonight about mobility, economic development, affordable housing, civic engagement, mental health, potential city hall, and then fluoride in the water. And all of these things are potentially involved in the budget. So it was also made, a comment was also made earlier, that the budget really should reflect the priorities of the city, of the community. And so I would encourage you to please reach out to your city council members and make sure that we have your input about your priorities, because this is a difficult budget year. And city council is currently working on the budget. We will be working on it through this month and into the next month. So please do reach out. And I also wanted to make it clear that we are not cutting all of the environmental stewardship from the budget. There were some comments made earlier that made it sound like that might be the case. However, I do think that there is reason to make sure that we have the strategic plan, environmental stewardship elements represented in the plan. So those sorts of things, we could use your feedback, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
I'm next, okay. I am really eager to represent you on the Issaquah City Council. I've been endorsed by the Seattle King County Realtors, by the Affordable Housing Council, by the National Women's Political Caucus, by the Eastside Firefighters, by many elected officials, including Tollemarts and Mariah Batiste on the council, and over 100 regular citizens. I would love to serve this community that I have lived and worked in for 35 years. There is much that can be accomplished. I think there's much we can do to improve our affordable housing situation and to make some really significant changes in our mobility issues and better transit and better roads. And I have the background and the expertise to make those changes. So I would love to represent you on position number three for the Issaquah City Council. Thank you.
The city has actually conducted surveys and developed plans, and it's clear what our priorities are, right? It's to address mobility. It's to grow intelligently. And given the financial headwinds that we have, it really has to be fiscal responsibility. And so my platform is truly a reflection of those priorities. That's why I served on the Issaquah Traffic Task Force. That's why I'm running for council. So my platform is not one that is derived from outside political parties or special interest groups. This is a nonpartisan office, and it's tough for a moderate to get some of those endorsements if you haven't been in those rooms before, right? So I take a pragmatic approach, and that's why, you know, I preach fiscal responsibility, but I'm open to a balanced solution to balancing that budget. When it comes to my opponent, I do admire her, and I admire the nobility in her positions. But I think in the near term, we can't afford those. And on some things, in terms of affordable housing and in terms of social engineering for mass transit usage, she's a bit unrealistic, and I think we need to make a more pragmatic, realistic approach, especially given the financial headwinds that we're facing. Thank you.
Let me just close by painting a picture for you. The vision for Issaquah's future I hear time and time again on your doorsteps. You live in Issaquah. You can get around town quickly and safely in your car, on a bus, on your bike, or on foot, because the city's invested in your mobility and your quality of life. You look up and see our green, forested hillsides preserved, and you feel at home. You have easy access to a park where you can relax, or go for a run, or just enjoy time with friends and family. You know your city's working hard to make Issaquah a more affordable and welcoming place to live, raise your family, or do business. And most importantly, you know your city council will listen to you and then go to bat for you. I share this vision for Issaquah's future. And as a younger resident concerned for my own future, and a hometown resident concerned for the future of the city I love, Issaquah, I'd be honored to earn your vote, and I'm up to the job. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a statement first on fluoride and then go back into my closing remarks. I was a nursing student long before I got into financial services. So when you're this old, you've done a little bit of everything. And I was a nursing student, and one of the master's programs that I was involved in was, of all things, fluoride studies. We worked with the CDC, with the university I was attending, and it's very important to understand, a very important footnote that the CDC has on every single one of the statements that was made up here on the dais. The footnote says, "These results do not carve out the population that uses fluoride-added toothpaste." So when they're saying that water in the fluoride is getting the accolades for all these changes in dental health, they footnote it saying, "But we were not able to segment out the population that uses toothpaste." We have one big thing that happens with fluoride, and that's the one that's selling the fluoride. So that's all I'm going to say on fluoride. The budget is going to be set long before any of us are actually placed on council. So the role that I would play added to our council is a go-forward. And it's very important that the changes that we make now, for a city that has failed four financial audits in a row, is to have someone with budgeting expertise. I would be very honored to serve in that capacity. Thank you.
First of all, I just want to thank the community members that have shown up or that are tuning in. Great, great way to engage with your electeds and your potential electeds. So on that, I'm going to give you a little bit of homework. If you live in the city of Issaquah, if you work here, anything like that, if there's something that's important to you, here's how you email city council. We don't get that many emails. We read every single one of them. Citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. That reaches out to all seven of us. We're facing a budget where we have to make some difficult decisions. If you have some ideas, if you have something that you're passionate about, let us know. I mean, this is a great way, we're a small enough community that we can listen to every single one of you and have a community conversation. So that's your homework, should you choose to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Thank you for agreeing to come tonight and for agreeing to serve the city of Issaquah. Your service is very much appreciated. The citizens are lucky to have you. Good luck to each of you as you complete your campaigns in the next few weeks. The Cable TV Commission and staff have been recording tonight's forum to be replayed every day until the November 5 election on Issaquah City Channel 21 and streamed on the city's website. Please tell your friends to tune in so they, too, can become more informed voters. We hope our candidates will all post a link on their websites, Facebook, et cetera. Audience, thank you for coming tonight also. We'll now take a short break while we prepare to meet the candidates for the Issaquah School Board. Five minutes only.